Good afternoon.
Hi, Lynell.
Oh, hi, Eileen.
Hi, Mike.
Yeah, hi, Mike.
Now, I muted my, I was muted. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Lynell, I just now, you're muted. I just sent out a revised contract. If you would please post it to the website right after the meeting so the public has access to it.
Okay, okay. And I have it up, so if you need to share it.
Oh, I'll let you know. I don't, I've never done that before. I can probably figure it out, but.
Well, I have it up if you need it.
It's just got one new sentence in it.
Okay. Welcome, Tony.
You're muted, Tony.
Muted.
There you go.
Thank you.
Is this your first Zoom meeting, Tony?
I was involved in your first Zoom meeting that the board did a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And that was my only Zoom meeting in the past.
Oh, I've done so many now.
So with Lynell's help here, I'm able to, to make it today.
Excuse me, my dog wants to come in while we're waiting.
Okay, I, can you hear me? I just got a text from Sylvia saying start without her. Hold on, let me double check that. Read the rest of it here. She says, start without me having trouble. I can open the meeting. So.
Are we expecting Rick?
We are not.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll have to start the meeting and I'm gonna have to have your help as I go through this if you don't mind. Just make sure. Matter of fact, let me do, let me take one second here. Just to want to respond to Sylvia, just let her know that I've gotten, I received that. Okay. And just double, all right, so, because I didn't, let me just get the agenda called up here just to refer to it quickly.
Yeah, I have to mention to you, it's a bit out of order and I'm not sure why, but the public comments should actually go. We don't, we don't have public comments except for the public comments that are on the agreement. That's item number one. So it's a little misleading.
All right, so, so what you're saying is it will have, we will have public comments for item number one? Is that what you're saying? Before it.
Right. During a special meeting, you only take public comments with respect to items that are on the agenda. And since there's only one item on the agenda, it makes to me more sense to follow the usual process where I would give the staff reports, since it's my item. And the board would ask questions, you would open it up for public comment, and then close public comment or discussion and possible action.
Okay, all right, I'll keep that, I'll do it that way. And so, is everyone else here then? Without Sylvia, there's the four of us, there's Tony.
I just saw.
Oh, she just, okay, well, she's, she may still be trying. But shall we, shall we see if Sylvia gets on, or shall we?
I am here.
Oh, you are here, okay. I was just, Sylvia, I was just gonna start the meeting, but did you wanna go ahead and start it?
Yeah, I'm terribly sorry. I will start it, just to make it smooth as best as I can. I'm still trying to get on through my computer. But I apologize, we have very little time, so do we need to open the, open the meeting already?
We were just about to.
Just, just doing that. I was just making sure everyone was here and I was just about to open it.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take the role.
Director Stepi.
Here.
Vice President Logan.
Here.
Director Natoli.
Here.
Director Sheris Watt.
Here.
And President Hossai.
Here. So today, I just wanna warn folks that we are taking public comment at the end of our discussion. We are under a tight timeline with a hard stop at 1:00. And so I'm gonna ask Anne to introduce the item.
Good morning, all. This item was very briefly before the board last, during its last regular meeting, and it was decided that to continue the item because the hour was late. There is, there has been discussed for quite a while now, the need for a new contract with the KCC for the provision of recreational services to the community. I've had some suggestions of my own, which forms the bones of the draft and is largely either taken from the old documents from, suggestions from individual directors. The board as a whole has not ruled on any of these provisions. I've tried to tighten it, make it a better integrated document, include standard contract provisions, and improve the clarity. There are some significant differences from the prior contract documents, which I'll go ahead and summarize. The, this document includes a description of existing programming. It's referenced in Section 1.2 and Exhibit B. This is a very much a first draft, and the board may extensively revise this division. I believe it was, it was my understanding when I prepared this draft that Exhibit B described essentially the services that were already being provided. If that's not the case, of course, that that should be called to the board's attention and the board should make whatever adjustments it sees fit. Section 1.5 provides that the KCC may not use district property or revenue divided, derived from the use of district property for any purposes other than those authorized by the draft. And this would include political activities or publications not focused on KCC programming. Section 2 adjusts the compensation structure and provides for additional adjustments in the future to reflect facts on the ground with the operations. Section 4 contains a number of provisions to keep the board informed of the KCC's programs and its use of district property. Section 4 has a lot of operational requirements. It shifts the burden of responsibility of maintaining the facilities onto the district, whereas before that was a shared responsibility. Section 4.7 entitles KCC to use Building E in the future unless the district offers comparable alternate space. 4.8 provides that the KCC will not grant to district property to other groups, access to district property to other groups. Any other groups wishing to use district facilities will have to arrange that with the district directly. Section 4.9 contains requirements for KCC's website intended to improve access and responsibility and transparency, excuse me. I should note that at the request of one of the directors, I added some additional language to 4.9, a new requirement, which provides that the website will include five years of the most recent Form 990s on the website and a yearly detailed financial report. I just distributed this new language shortly before the meeting to the directors and the manager and clerk. It should be available on the website shortly after, or shortly. But I will read it, the language, right now so that everyone knows what it is. It's a new section 4.9.5. Five years of the most recent Form 990s, as well as detailed yearly financial reports. I just noticed a typo there, so I'll have to fix that yet again. Going back to the rest of it, the section 5 contains what are often referred to as boilerplate provisions, but these were in fact very important provisions governing the contract. The ones that maybe most noteworthy, 5.2 has automatic renewal provisions, as does the existing agreement. But it also allows for the parties to terminate upon six months' notice in case of breach, or if a health and safety emergency arises, situation arises. Section 5.4 and 5.5 contain updated indemnity and insurance provisions. People who do not regularly contract with public agencies often blanch because they seem hyper-technical and somewhat onerous. However, they're very necessary to protect an agency who doesn't exercise day-to-day control over employment or operations. They put the responsibility with the contractor who has more control over what actually happens. The insurance requirements make sure that there is actually funds to pay for claims that may be brought against either the contractor, in this case, KCC, or the district. So I know there's a lot of people wanting to talk about this agreement, and I'm sure the board has lots to say as well. So with that, I'll close out my report and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne. Unfortunately, I am unable to see the view I have. As you can tell, I've just, it's not been a great morning on my technology front, and I'm having difficulty seeing director's hands. I'm going to just start very quickly. I'm gonna join the meeting shortly. It looks like I can join from my computer any second now. So if you guys will indulge me a minute, I really apologize. I don't know what, you know, if technology doesn't work, it's really frustrating.
Sorry.
Do you mind if I just jump in with a comment? I just wanna let the other directors know and participants that I requested of Sylvia and Tony, I'm sorry, Anne and Tony, that we prepare a temporary contract because, that will allow the operation of KCC throughout the summer. In case, because I know the timeline and the turnaround is short. And maybe that direction can be given later, but I just wanted to let the other directors know and, and folks know that I think that that would be helpful so that we can fully discuss these changes.
Yes, I think that it would be, if the KCC is willing, it would be easy enough to provide for a three-month extension of the existing contract.
Okay, I think we, all right, we lost Sylvia there. Should we, should we wait to see if Sylvia gets back on, or should we?
I think with time being limited.
Yeah.
Mike, you should just continue.
Okay, okay. So then, Anne, you said that at this, at this point, we wanna do public comments before item one on the agenda?
I think that if there, if there are any, if there are any board questions.
Oh, okay.
This would, this would be the time to raise them, and then I would suggest that we, as expeditiously, as expeditiously as possible, move to public comments. Oh, hi Sylvia.
Hi, sorry, again. I, okay, I'd like to ask board members to raise their hand. I know that we started a conversation last meeting, so please raise your hand if you want to, you know, comment or ask questions. Director Natoli.
Yeah, I have a number of questions, and I've looked through the KCC counter and have a lot of questions. I think the best to do is to form the ad hoc committee as proposed to go through this. Go through the proposal from the district and KCC and, and come up with a final document, a final draft.
I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you.
I was just saying, I think it's important to form an ad hoc committee. I have a lot of questions on the KCC counterproposal, and I think the ad hoc committee could best straighten things out between the district draft and the rebuttal from KCC.
Thank you.
Most expeditious thing to do in the time, because we don't want a contract by committee.
I agree that, I would like to propose that as, after discussion. That's something we had thought about last time, so I agree with that myself. But we should still try to hammer out some comments and questions now. All right, Director Sheris Watt and then Director Deppi. You're right, you're muted.
I'm wondering if we can go through the document, kind of beginning to end real quick. And you missed Sylvia, I proposed a temporary agreement with KCC that will take us through summer camp. So from now and through August 14th.
We'll have to take that up as a separate motion, I think, and I would agree with that as well, but I think it's something we could draft and reserve and hope that we can still hammer out an agreement before too long. But does anyone have any objections to going through piece by piece? I kind of agree with that. Let's try to get as many comments and questions answered with the drafted document in front of us. Unfortunately, we, I, we only got the counterproposal at 9:00 this morning, and the fact of the matter is, we haven't actually made a proposal. This is just a draft. So let's go ahead and just go right through it and see if there are any comments or questions on the recitals. From, from the point, from the contract that Anne has prepared, let's just start there, because again, we haven't made a proposal. So there are recitals where Anne has just added restroom in red, you'll see from the previous version. I don't think there's anything going on there. How about we go to section one?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. On the recitals, I have several comments.
Okay.
One is, I think the better way to do this is to define district facilities, and Exhibit A says it's a map. But I think what Exhibit A is supposed to be is a list. And so rather than having the list here, and you also have a list in Section 1.4, was it 1.4, I think, have it in one place, not several places. There's a reference to the annex in the recital, I'm not sure why. Also, there's a reference to a storage closet in 1.4.1, but not here. There's Rooms 1, but if it's singular Room 1, it should not have the S. There's also a Room 2 and a Room 3. I see here, it's saying Room 3 is not covered, but then there's reference to Room 2 somewhere else. This is what I mean, doing this by committee is going to drive everyone nuts. I think the best thing to do is to form the ad hoc committee, go through it. Have two directors or one director go through it with Anne, and look at the KCC proposal, but otherwise, it's gonna take forever.
May I offer a suggestion, sort of a midway suggestion? I would very much appreciate exactly the types of comments the Director Natoli has just offered in terms of getting, I would say, the details of this right and consistent. There may be some larger conceptual issues, however, that I think warrant full board buy-in. There's some significant shifts here in terms of how much control and oversight the board will exercise over KCC. And I think we need a board consensus over matters like that. I don't know that that would be easily handled by committee.
But I agree with that.
Details of the terms, I think, should be delegated to a committee.
Okay. So we can, we will do that today, I agree with that. But I, again, agree that we need more discussion on some of the other stuff. These kinds of comments are easily sent to Anne, like the kind of stuff you're talking about, Eileen, which is, I agree with you, very important to be clear and make it like streamlined, can all be done, you know, in writing to Anne.
And it was done, it was done this morning.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay. So let's move on to section one, and.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I, I just wanted to note that the reason Room, I proposed that Room 3 is not covered is that we have a touchdown space possibly for use by the KPD during construction. So that's.
And traditionally, Room 3 was not used during these programming hours anyway.
But I just wanted to clarify, that's.
Right, just the point of the contract. If we go into just the, the section one, which was the facilities, I think, I think the point that was just made is that we just need to kind of go through that maybe more in detail. So I don't think there's anything really up to here that needs a lot of discussion by the board. I think the second piece is the compensation. Is there, let me see, Director Deppi, you have your hand up? You're muted.
I've got my hand up for a number of things. So do you want, I mean, are we gonna go line by line? I'm not quite sure what your process is. Do you want to?
Well, I was trying to go section by section. Yeah, is there, I mean, is there an overarching?
I've got, I've got small detail and overarching stuff, so I'm not sure.
I mean, if the detail stuff can be sent to Anne and it's, you know, and doesn't need discussion by the board, most likely, if it's not.
You know, that's the thing, is that my detail that I think is non-controversial might be controversial for the board. So I, if we send comments to Anne and she puts them in and no one likes them, I don't think that makes sense. This really isn't doing it by committee totally, but the board has to approve this final contract. So I don't see a problem with us giving comments about the agreement as it stands, because otherwise, we're just gonna have one more round of, like, some things I sent to Anne aren't in here. Maybe she puts them in, maybe she doesn't, and then it comes back, and then we've gotta go back and forth. So I really don't see a problem. I know time is short. You know, I can try to be as brief as possible, but I do think that listing, I don't have a million of them, they're not that many, but I think the board members weighing in on what we think about the contract is not only important, but there's no way we could send this to a subcommittee if the subcommittee doesn't know what the board wants.
Right, that's the point.
I do have to say that this, this is the agreement. If the KCC has problems, they should give comments to Anne and let her rewrite the clauses. But to have a subcommittee of two directors and two, I don't know what KCC people try to rewrite a contract, that's just, that's silly. I mean, this is a legal document that Anne should be in control of. If the KCC has comments or objections, they should come to Anne, come to the board, and we can talk about them. But to try to get a Frankenstein contract together with two directors and two board members of the KCC is silly. That's, that's just not gonna work.
I think the idea of an ad hoc is that they work together with the lawyers to come up with another draft to present to the board. The board could certainly, in majority, reject it, but the idea.
So that's the point, is why, why have two directors go and negotiate something when the rest, the whole board might not like it? To me, it seems silly. If it's a fact-finding mission, that makes sense. But to have, but regardless of that, before that happens, I think the subcommittee needs to get clear direction from the board.
I think that's correct. Before we go completely to you, I just wanna see if Director Natoli has something to say that can, can be somewhat short, and then we'll go back to Director Deppi. Your hand is up, Director Natoli. Okay, all right, let's, let's go ahead and let's try to, like, give it, you give yourself maybe 10 minutes to try to bring these things up, because I do wanna make sure that we watch time, as you know. Or 15, you know, I mean, because we have other people who wanna talk to.
So if you want me to just give you my comments and then?
I think you should give up your comments and see if there are, you know, if we have to have a discussion on something, we'll try to have that discussion.
Okay, great. So the first comment is 4.7, 4.7, which says, making building, building available for the KCC unless district provides alternative premises of comparable size amenities and location. Now, we know that there isn't anything of comparable size amenities and location that we own. And we also know, we're waiting on a report from the architect about Building E, the annex, and the parking lot. But the board hasn't determined that Building E is just not an option whatsoever. And so this is essentially saying building E is not an option for putting the police there. I'm not saying that's the best option in any, any way, shape or form, but the board has not determined that. And this is basically nailing our feet to the floor, saying we can't use building E anymore. And I think that unless the district provides alternative premises of comparable amenities, maybe probably location, because we don't own anything else that isn't in the park. But comparable size, I think, has to come out of the contract unless the board decides, yeah, we're never going to give them building E. But if that's not determined by the board yet, which I don't think it is, then I think that has to come out of the contract. Because again, we're nailing our feet to the floor and that's a bad idea. Sylvia, can I just keep going and then?
Well, what I, what I would say just is that this board has to decide whether we're committed to recreational programming. And so if we're committed to recreational programming, we would want to have a facility for recreational programming. So that at the highest level is what I would want to be committed to, because I believe it's part of our charge and something we want to do.
So put, rewrite it with, with those words, but this is, this is far too specific, specific, I'm sorry. And there's, we talked about the website. I do think, and I suggested to Anne, making the KCC's website and any subsequent registration site, ADA or Section 508 compliant is going to take a while. So we might want to give them a grace period to transition to a 508 compliant website. So they'll probably have to go to a different streamlined type for, you know, five point one three C threes. So I would suggest some kind of a grace period where they can transition to that, because it's not going to happen overnight, as we know. And I think, I thought there was something requiring, there was going to be something requiring a certain number of adult classes. And I didn't see that in here. Maybe I missed it. Anne, is that?
Um, you know, I don't know that that was, except for the reference in. There's a reference to it, I believe, in the recitals, but I don't think it was in the language that was supplied to me for Exhibit B.
There was something at one point about class, you know, classes for ages 12 and up. Which I think encompassed a couple of things. One is their counselor program, CIT program. And that would, of course, include adult classes. I think there was some fear that it meant that we were requiring sort of classes for teens, because we put 12 and up. But I think it was trying to reflect some of what currently happens, which is their counselors are age, you know, are older.
Section one point two does refer to adult programs. But I believe that, yes, Exhibit B, Section B does refer to classes for those 12 and up, five classes for those 12 and up.
And is that per, per year, per term?
Each session.
So, so if, so that would imply adult classes, because if it's not summer, I mean, Director Sheris Watt may know more about this provision.
Yes, I was proposing that we have, we currently, they have two adult programs on their website, one of which is being offered right now. And I thought that we should have a baseline for adult programming, which is absolutely, the 12 and up came from the CIT. It, you know, I was trying to draw a line that encompassed anyone outside of Hilltop kind of age. I think that should the KCC not be able or want to provide those programs, that is fine. But I want the KPPCSD then to retain the right to have the space so that we can run our own programs. If, if programs are not being provided in the morning hours, then KPPCSD should have the right to come in and provide that programming for a variety of adult classes.
Okay, that's a helpful explanation. And I mean, I would say I kind of agree. I know that, you know, the issue of loneliness is a big thing for population, older population, and not even so old. Frankly, I remember talking to one person who said as soon as their kids went off to high school and college, it already started losing a social network. So I think a minimum baseline personally, it would be great. And I know that the KCC has said that they are interested in trying to get more adult programming. This might be an incentive. And then, you know, if they're unable to, I'm not sure if they were unable to, why, we would be better suited, but we certainly would have the right to try to do that and to use the space. Director Deppi, want to continue?
Right, so the compensation, two dot one yearly rate of thirty thousand or seventy-five percent of fees collected from the activities. That would almost certainly always be thirty thousand, because it looks like they collect, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees from the activities. Now, I don't know, maybe I'm reading, but the seventy-five percent is, is calculated on a different number. So it'd be interesting to know if I'm misunderstanding where the seventy-five percent comes from. Because it looks like they make about forty thousand dollars a year in profit. Some years, of course, in the COVID years, they didn't really make much. But over the last 10 years, it looks like about forty thousand dollars a year in profit. So thirty thousand dollars is certainly seems reasonable. You know, if they were, if it's a franchise agreement and they're a nonprofit, although I would think the profit would come back to us, because it's, we're the ones responsible for the rec program, but that's.
Just, I wouldn't use the term profit in the nonprofit world, that, you know, above the cost of providing the programs, but.
Profit in a general sense, not, they're a nonprofit, so they have to account for their profits. If they make a profit, they have to account for it. So the, my biggest issue is, is the outlook. I know it's kind of indirectly dealt with by not allowing non-recreational activities to be done with our on-premises or I forget exactly the wording. And that would exclude the outlook, because the outlook is primarily an editorial in newspaper. There's, I did a little research and this would just take a second. But it looks, it looks like, just give me a second. If I go back, I don't know, like, eight, eight issues, eleven percent of the pages are dedicated to recreation. Ninety percent is editorial articles and non-recreational related. So I don't think you can consider the outlook in any way, shape or form a recreation newspaper. I've looked at El Cerritos, anyway.
I can tell you that in the response from the KCC, they addressed that directly, and I can read you if you would like to know what they say about that.
Sure.
This is section one point five. What they propose is the case, the sentence that they propose keeping is "KCC shall use district facilities solely for providing recreational programs and for other uses expressly allowed in this agreement." They strike the rest, and it's what they say, "Is remainder strictly and respectfully pending confirmation of the legality of district dictating how an independent contractor may use revenues. If by chance this was a reference to the Kensington Outlook, please note Outlook is entirely funded by advertising. You can see that from the profit and loss reports, and no Outlook work is conducted on district property. And I do believe that the sentence as written, "KCC shall use district facilities solely for providing recreational programs" would cover it, because the outlook is not considered a recreational program.
Right, well, so that's, I personally don't think the KCC should be in the business of publishing the outlook. Now, the outlook has a sort of history.
But that is, that is not, I mean, unfortunately, not part of the agreement.
That's, that's an important part of the agreement. I mean, to say that the outlook is independent of us, the KCC, we're tied to the head of the KCC. They're in our, in the park, they do our recreation program. And still they publish a paper that it's very editorialized. I'm not complaining about it. I think Linnea Doos has done an admirable job of, of trying to be objective as possible. And I'm not complaining about the Outlook paper at all. But I don't think that the KCC, being our recreation provider and being so closely associated with us, should be publishing a newspaper that in one edition selects the questions to ask our candidates for the board and does interviews of them. And that just seems completely, totally inappropriate. Again, the outlook has a sort of history. There was an editor, John Feld, who had, he was fired in 2008 because he wrote this big article critical of the KPCSD. Two thousand nine, it's sort of a reversal, they hired Joel Cosette, and I'm sure some of you remember the Joel Cosette era, which was really notorious, very biased. He was fired because of an article where he talked about Citizenship's pitchforks coming for the monster in the castle. I think that was one of his terms. So, but he was, that was, that newspaper for a while was very biased to the board. I mean, it was almost, seemed like it was controlled by the board. With Linnea Doos, I think she's really tried very hard not to be associated with it, but it's there, you know, their salaries, look at their nine ninety, the salaries are included, she's paid by the KCC. Linnea Doos is paid by the KCC. So you can't say that it's independent. There's, they could come up with a firewall, a real firewall where the finance aren't mixed. It's a completely separate organization. I'd be, you know, I might be okay with that, but there's no firewall. It's intertwined with their finances, and it's not even part of their, their charge. You know, they have to file a nine ninety T, which is unrelated business activities. That's what the outlook is considered, is unrelated business activity, and they've got to account for the profit. So I personally don't think that the, the KCC should be publishing it, should. I'd be willing to give them a grace period to, or at least a proposal to somehow, how can they guarantee that it's not in any shape, way or form associated with the KCC? But right now, it's, you just, you can't argue that the KCC and us aren't joined in it.
You know, we have limited time. You're making your, your position known, but at this point, it's not part of the contract. Unless you wanted to insert a provision, which would have to vote on, that would, you know, make that happen. And that is, you know, not where we're at right now.
Well, what do you mean you're not where we're at? Well, I'm proposing that's where we should be at. If everyone else is comfortable with the KCC publishing the outlook, a highly political, you know, it's a biased newspaper and one, sometimes yes, sometimes no. I mean, they decide what's, again, I think we need the outlook. I'm happy with it. I'd like to, as a board member, be able to criticize it. I don't feel comfortable criticizing it, because we are associated with it.
I'm going to ask, Anne's got her hand raised, maybe she can provide some guidance here.
I would say that the current draft of the contract would preclude using the district property or any funds derived from the recreational programs held in the district properties for the purposes of providing the outlook. So that, that issue is currently on the table in the draft that I'm putting forward for the, for the board's consideration. Director Deppi is asking that we take it a step further and preclude the KCC from acting. These are decisions that the board should make after hearing public comment. And decide whether or not they agree with the draft, it's written, whether they'd rather go farther, as Director Deppi is suggesting, or simply drop the issue altogether, but we should get public comment first.
Okay, I made my point, that's all.
Right, is there anything else that you wanted to discuss in a broad sense?
No, that's fine.
Director Sheris Watt?
Okay, I'll be quick. So I agree about the outlook somehow separating and having that, the point of it. But the point for me was that I didn't want it ever to be implied or to be necessary that the KCC profit from the outlook or, you know, excess funds from the outlook was then funding the recreation program. I think that, which is why the compensation, as it was suggested, appealed to me. I mean, flexible about the amount of fees, but having the rate of either a yearly rate or if it was, if we have a couple of difficult years, that it's a percentage of fees collected. That way, it's, it's flexible for the KCC and, and no point are we taking any profits from any other entity. The other thing I would suggest under operations, number four. As everyone knows, the, a big change in this contract is that we resume physical responsibility for building E and start making sure that repairs occur in a timely manner and under, you know, provisions for prevailing wage, et cetera, et cetera, which I believe we should be doing. I think it's just the ethical thing to do and it keeps us out of hot water. I think that requires a yearly inspection of the building if we're not occupying it, if there's not, so that we can and that any, it's probably covered that the park administrator, therefore the KCC administrator notifies us of repairs that are necessary. I agree with Chris's time for changing the website over to ADA and that, and that it should also say that registration must be ADA compliant. And then I think my last note is that under general provisions, where the agreement should renew automatically unless it's forty-five days prior, I think we should change that to sixty days prior, that we're seeing already that we're too up close. So if anybody, if we need to renegotiate an agreement, I think we should entity sixty days.
I wanted to ask about that, because I suppose now too, this agreement, one of the reasons we completely scrapped the old agreement, it was really too difficult to try to really salvage. In the future, we could always amend this agreement as well, right? And that's, that's the other piece of that, which would be good. All right, I would like to just talk about one thing, which is section four ten, the KCC board shall set fees. The KCC may charge higher fees. I've done some research around Berkeley, El Cerrito, Albany, and I discovered a couple, two things. I say, one, the after-school programs that I've seen don't make, like, I think Harding has an after-school program. They don't make a distinction for residents and non-residents, and I'm comfortable with that, I guess. But they are, they do clearly make distinctions for summer camps and for, for any adult programming where there's a difference. And the range, in Albany, they just plus ten dollars for non-residents. And Berkeley, it's twenty percent across the board, whatever it is. And El Cerrito ranges from, the calculations I did, twenty-one point four percent up to twenty-six percent, like twenty-five point eight or something like that. So I, I want to ask Anne if, if we can require a non-resident fee for summer camp and adult classes of, you know, a certain percentage.
I believe so.
That, that is a change I would like to propose, and we can vote on that or discuss that further. It is in keeping with the changes we've made last year around the fees for the community center, for the tennis courts. And I, I just think it's, it's appropriate, given that residents pay taxes to support all these facilities, non-residents don't, and these facilities are what's used to provide programming. I think that was my, my only real biggest thing. And then I wanted to ask around, we don't really have a policy on this, and it's really a district, we should probably adopt as a district. But as folks may know, there's a lot of talk around bathroom use policies. And I think one of my regrets, which Sylvia Ellsbury may appreciate, is that we didn't do something more around all-gender or non-gender bathrooms. But at the time, we did not. So I don't know whether we need to think about, outside of this agreement, maybe a policy around bathroom use that would apply to all renters of the, or all users of the community center. So that's maybe for another conversation. But I think, you know, maybe we could go to public comment now, it's twelve forty-four. And then we have to make some, some board decisions, and we still have a hard stop at one o'clock. Am I correct about that?
As long as the appointment doesn't come knocking at the front door, I can stay on.
Okay, we also have to think about appointing an ad hoc committee. So if, sorry, Director Logan?
No, I, I'm disagreeing with, go ahead.
Okay, so let me go to the public, and I would just urge folks, this is just, the point of this meeting for most part was to get the directors together, just have a conversation. We know there may be different things, but as the negotiation process goes, that may be possible to address. So if there are, I see right now no comments from the public. Does anyone want to make public comment? All right, I see one. I'd like to everyone to raise their hand now, because I really have to watch time. And I see two. If there are only two, I would ask everyone to limit their comments to two minutes. All right, Delk, you should go ahead and unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
All right, I'll just skip.
I'll just skip through some things. I'm a little bit uncomfortable about the board sending comments to a general council and the public doesn't know what those comments are. More importantly, Kensington Community Council has been completely left out of the agreement title. Look at the title of the agreement. All right. Skipping on down in, under C, it says improve, to improve and administer facilities. Shouldn't that be programs? And in 141, it's unclear which storage spaces can and cannot be used. This is important, I think. 1.5 says that programs are limited to Kensington residents and schoolchildren. This seems inconsistent with allowing non-residents to pay a higher fee as stated in 410. And 21, there should be an of in 75% of fees. And that should immediately be followed by which or whichever is less to avoid the dangling participle. This is important. Cost of living is a vague term and should be replaced, for example, by San Francisco, Oakland, Haywood, CP, CPIU for April or some other month. And 4.6, the district must provide a 90 day notice for reallocating facilities for other uses. But under 4.7, it's 120 days regarding building E. Is that correct?
That says as written, yes, correct right now.
All right. Finally, in closing, Kensington residents are required to pay Bayviews for Bayviews services. Yet more oversight and reporting applies to KCC programs, which are optional. For example, the only financial information BV must report each year is the applicable CPI increase in new rates. This does not seem consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And Paul and Vida Doro are next and you should be able to speak now and on the, oh, sorry, I was the wrong person. I was supposed to have Linnell help me today and of course took over. Sorry, my natural oldest of six children tendencies. And Paul and, Paul or Vida, you are able to unmute and speak.
Thank you, Sylvia. It's Vida Doro.
Thank you.
Paul, I want to applaud you for the idea of reinstating the non-resident fee. Indeed, at one point, KCC did have that, but that was a couple of decades ago. I, I'd like to get a clarification from the board. There is a wide rumor in the community that the whole purpose of this exercise is for the KPP CSD board to take over the recreation directly. And it was confirmed that partly by what Director Sheris Watt just said a few minutes ago, that if KCC cannot muster enough adult programs, that you will take over and create that. And so I, I'd like to know whether that rumor is, is it reality? Because that's the perception of that this whole exercise is to derail, to derail KCC out of doing it. And finally, the document keeps referring to a park administrator. Who is your park administrator? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Hold on one moment. Okay. Thanks for keeping comments brief and short. So I think some, a lot of Delk's comments will be most likely dealt with in contract negotiations. I don't want to really give too much credence to rumor because I just, personally, I, I can't speak for the board. I would say that that as rumor is a rumor and I, I don't, I don't even want to dignify it. We wouldn't be spending, we're spending a lot of time right now on this. And if Director Sheris Watts wants to address it, because it's her name was brought up in vain, that's, that's fine. And Tony can talk about who the park administrator is. I mean, right now Rosa is handling the community center. I'm not sure whether that's formally part of her title and Tony may not know. Director Sheris Watt?
Yes, no. The intention in, in talking about adult programming was exactly what you said earlier. It's very clear that there is a need for adult programming that, and that adults I have talked to, I, I sent out an inquiry among folks I know who have put their children through KCC classes and taken classes and asked them about their experience with Kensington Park. It was universally pro, they enjoyed the KSEP programs, thought they were wonderful, thought the camps were wonderful. But they were adults and the adults really enjoyed their adult programming and, and sought out more of it. And I think that it's just important, I, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely pro giving KCC first crack at more adult programming. But I don't know what their board would like to take on and what they feel capable of. And if they don't, I want, then I think it's the, the responsibility of the KPP CSD to step in and, and provide some adult additional, perhaps just additional adult programming. So, no, it's not.
Director, Director Deppy?
I unmuted myself. Great. As I, I don't, obviously I'm not going to get much traction about the outlook is at large, but I would like to kind of go, go on about a financial firewall. I think Director Sheris Watt alluded to that, that no money is from the outlook, either come back to the KCC or, and certainly no money is from the recreation program fund, but the outlook. So they could come up with some kind of a financial firewall and a procedural firewall, at least explain how that works. Because right now with their, again, their Form 990s and their 990Ts, it's, it's unclear if those finances and responsibilities get intermingled. So it would be nice to at least get clarity on how the separation from the recreation activities in the outlook really are, are separate. It would be nice to, if, if nothing else, to get clarity on that. That's all.
Okay. I, you know, we have seven minutes before a potential hard stop. So I think we have a couple of things that I'd like to see, I think what we want to see happen. I mean, I think one is an ad hoc committee and the purpose of that is that we cannot continue to negotiate in this way. I think the board has had a chance to sort of talk about the things that they, that they are concerned about. We're going to have to respond to KCC in a, in a timely way. And ultimately, the whole board has to approve a contract, can suggest amendments and vote on things. But I, I think at the request, frankly, of Anne, who made this request even before we went this far. Yes, Director, I mean, sorry, General Counsel Danforth.
Yes, I, I would say that even before you appoint the subcommittee, from what I've heard this evening, the one substantive issue that's come up so far that definitely requires full board concurrence is the issue of what to do about the outlook and whether the current language is good, whether the current language goes too far, or whether the board wishes to go further is suggested by Director Deppy. It would be helpful to have a board consensus on that point.
Sure. I was not listening to these in any particular order, actually. I was just, yeah, Director Deppy?
I had a comment about the subcommittee, so I can't really, what Anne just said, pretty much I've made my comments. As a, as a member, it would be nice to get some clarity on a firewall. That's, that would probably be, you know, maybe an acceptable proposal.
Okay. There are members of the KCC board on, on the things that are, they're already hearing that request. So, you know, hopefully they can just address that, but we can make that as a formal request as well. Are there any other provisions of the contract that were of sufficient substance? And I, I don't recall any really. I guess, I guess mine, which is to require a, a non-resident fee for summer camp and and adult programming and what that should be. That, that is probably one of the biggest changes. And I guess if I was going to make a proposal, I would, I, I mean, it, what was here was 10% as up to, I would say not up to, I would say shall, you know, shall charge a non-resident fee of 10, of a plus 10% for adult programming and summer camps. That is actually kind of low versus some of the other ones. I don't know if anyone wants to think about a higher amount. It's hard, it's hard for me to know, like, for example, if a summer camp is $280 for the week, and I'm just throwing a number out of the air, that would only be, you know, $28 more. Director Sheris Watt?
I'm either comfortable, comfortable with like 10% or a flat fee of 10 or $15 as someone who just paid for an Albany summer camp and paid the non-resident fee. So I, I think, I don't know if it's easier if we just say it's a flat fee, it's, you know, or, or a percentage.
And I think the reason percent, go ahead, Director, sorry, General Counsel Danforth.
I just was asking for a point of clarification here. When the board does reach its consensus, there is an issue of flat fee versus percentage, but there's also the issue of with respect to KSEP and other non, non-adult programs, do you still want to be permissive and allow the KCC to charge differential? I mean, I, I hear that there's a proposal to require it for some program, but do you want to allow it for the other programs?
I personally would be fine with that. If that was something that they wanted to do in order to meet their financial obligation and that, that was helpful to them, I would not have an objection.
Okay. I would like a board consensus on that. Thank you. That'd be great.
Okay. So I guess I need to make a motion. And I, is there any discussion around a percentage versus a flat fee? I mean, the thing about a flat fee is it can seem like a big percent, you know, or a small percent depending on what it is. So that's why I kind of prefer to percentage myself.
I prefer percentage.
Okay. And knowing that the range in, at least in some of the places I've seen is, you know, is generally 20. Do we want to go that high or do we, are we comfortable with 10%? I'm personally comfortable with 10%.
Well, what's, what is the point of, of charging more for non-residents?
That money, I mean, that's, that's a good question. I think that money should like automatically, well, that's a good question, Anne. I mean, I was thinking it would just automatically comes to the district. But I guess the other question is, that question is, does that, does that help them meet their obligation? It doesn't give us any more. It helps them meet their obligation in a way that I suppose doesn't impinge on, I don't know. It doesn't, it doesn't hurt, hurt them in making, reaching their, it's another way for them to reach their obligation to pay us, but I guess it doesn't come directly to us.
I think also once you, we discussed the idea that if we have this fee, there is the possibility maybe in future of talking with these other agencies about a reciprocal agreement. And that maybe then our children can take camps or things, you know, in other areas, other cities.
Yes, that would actually be a, a great benefit that ultimately if, because that would be a great benefit to residents to to waive, they have reciprocal agreements with other jurisdictions to waive the fee. Predominantly, I would say, most folks who, well, who knows, I'm not adult programming.
I'm, I'm not questioning the, the presence of a fee. I'm just wondering or asking, what's the purpose with a view towards helping us set what that fee should be? So if it's a matter of generating more revenue for the KCC and possibly for us and the, the usual amounts are, you know, 20% or more, I'd say 10 is too low. I'd say we should be 15 at least. Because if you look at also their, they make a lot of money from the KSEP program and there's probably a lot of non-residents in there. And so.
Right. But that is, that, that is true. Actually, in the past, the numbers of children from El Cerrito attending Hilltop are higher, actually. The number of families are higher than Hill, than, than Kensington. The reason I didn't want to require it though, is that I hadn't seen it required in other after school enrichment programs, honestly. I had seen it on, on, on summer camp and adult programming. I had not seen it in after school programming.
Well, I think with after school programming, if the kids are attending Hilltop, it makes sense not to have an additional fee.
Yeah. Why not?
Well, if Hilltop has nothing to do with us, our district.
Right. But the after school program, even like El Cerrito runs after school program for schools and the point is to, you know, help the parents that attend that school, even if they're not residents, because that happens from time to time, that you have a non-resident attending. Director Sheris Watt?
I would, I guess, yeah, I would like to not have an after school fee because the presumption also is those parents are participating in the school life in other ways. And which is beneficial to Kensington. But I think maybe we should leave it at 10% now and, you know, maybe that goes up over, over years, but then it's cost competitive and this is a beginning, right? This will not begin until 2023. So it's clearly not going to happen this summer, but that would be my suggestion.
I, I mean, we can also leave it to the ad hoc to work out the exact percentage, but I think between 10 to 20 is, you know, minimum 10, maximum 20. We just leave it like that for now. Do a little more study of various jurisdictions or, you know, what the implications might be. Judd, Anne?
Again, a clarification. I, I heard from Director Hussaj that we should allow them to, to charge that extra fee for KSEP and other non-specified programs. I heard from Director Sheris Watt that there should be no fee for those children. So we wouldn't allow it. I'd like clarity on that point. And when you say 10 to 20, we're now talking about the mandatory fee, I take it.
Yes.
And so you want to require that they charge a minimum of 10%. And this is for the summer and the adult, a minimum of 10% and a maximum of 20 for those programs.
I was thinking we could set, we could still set the percentage in the contract of ultimately, but we don't have to decide that right now since we're a little under the gun. And, you know, so we could just make a proposal. And I, I guess I agree ultimately. I was the one who said, sure, if they want to charge extra for the parents, but I think Director Sheris Watt is saying, let's not do that. So we're just talking about a mandatory non-resident fee for summer camp and for adult programming.
Okay. To be established as a percentage?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think, do we need any further board action on that? Or do you feel like you have consent? I, I see consensus for that and that would give us direction. Okay. So I think then unless I'm mistaken, the last direct action we should take at this point is to appoint an ad hoc committee. And I am going to appoint myself to that because I would like to be a part of that. And I was going to ask Director Sheris Watt if she would like to serve on that committee.
That would be all right with other board consensus.
Yeah. Director Deppy?
Yeah, I, I just had a comment and I wasn't volunteering. So I just, I want to, we should get clear what the, this ad hoc committee is supposed to do. And also I think it's clear, or we should get clear that my understanding is the contract as it stands, we're all comfortable with it. We like the provisions. This is what we want as a, as a board, as a contract. This is not a bunch of talking points or, or things that maybe we like or we don't, but my understanding, and we should probably get more clarity is that this contract in, in its entirety is what we like. This is what we, we would want. These are the provisions. And so any modifications, of course, you know, contract has to be viewed as a whole. So you start picking apart things and the whole thing can unravel. So I, I think it should be clear for the subcommittee, if there are some, some modifications, and this should be the contract we work from, not any proposed alternative contract. There should be modifications to this. But this is, should be the working document. Absolutely. And again, would hopefully agree with that. But that, this is what we want. This is not nice to have, but this is kind of a carefully crafted document that all, all of us, the board would like to see. And if there are suggestions about modifying it, fine, but it's not, not a completely fungible, anything goes type of document.
I mean, go ahead, Anne.
I, I would say yes with an asterisk, which means, you know, I have not yet had the opportunity to go through the KCC document. I would expect to go through that document, incorporate suggestions that I would advise. Of course, the subcommittee could also look through and direct other changes. And ultimately, this will have to come back to the board and they will have the final say, the board as a whole. But I think to keep the ball rolling, I should do an initial look and see if there's something that I agree should definitely be in there. Because it's entirely possible that they know these programs better than I do, obviously.
But you agree that, that our document should be the, the working document?
Yes, I think we have to start with some, one document.
And, and the KCC did, I mean, again, they responded this morning with something in writing, but they, they are using that format and the, and the basic document.
As far as I can tell, yes.
Yes, so, okay, understood. Any, any, so I'm proposing a, an ad hoc committee that would be made up of myself and Director Sheris Watt. I suppose we should then.
Well, you have the authority to appoint one, right?
Yes, I do, I do, so that's what I'm going to do. And, and then that would probably conclude our meeting for today. We have no other action items, yes, Anne?
Just as a point of clarification, I would expect to come back on June 9th. With a request for authorization for the general manager to negotiate and execute an extension of the current agreement till the end of the summer. Subject to general counsel approval.
If we aren't able to, you don't think we're going to be able to reach an agreement by the end of June? Or that's, is that?
We only have one more regular board meeting between now and then. So I think it would be relieve everyone's anxiety if we extended for, say, three months. So that the current programs, there's no anxiety about the current programs.
Well, we, we terminated that agreement, so we would have to create a separate agreement just for the summer session.
No, we, we could simply go back and say, you know, assuming that they concur. Of course, with KCC, with KCC's concurrence, we could agree to an agreement that is essentially an extension. It would be, you know, it would essentially resurrect it for three months so that we don't have to rush this. Because again, there's only between June 30th. And now there is only one regular board meeting and I, I just don't want to. Have to put too much pressure on anyone.
Director Sheris Watt?
I, I just also think their board meeting is at the very beginning of the month. So I think it's June, like June 4th or something, so I think their scheduling might be difficult too.
We will not have a draft by then.
The likelihood that the subcommittee comes back with a document that we, we can just say yes to is very low.
Well, that's not very, very encouraging.
No.
I was just being realistic.
Okay, and, and we could, I mean, if we could, if we had to do a special meeting for this, we are, we are able to though, to. Like as we are doing today, we could approve the contract at a special meeting.
But they'd have to, any changes, we'd have to go back to the KCC and then back to us. And so, you know, the turnaround time is, it gets kind of tight.
Yeah, I always tend to be overly optimistic about these things. Okay, well, it is 1:09, so I appreciate the nine minutes grace. We really, really worked hard to, it was very difficult to schedule this meeting. I continued to, you know, ask that folks do their best when we have special meetings. Thank you for this, thank you Directors, Director Natoli in particular for accommodating this schedule. And we will see everybody at our regular meeting in June.
Very good.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome back, Tony, thanks so much.
Oh, yes.